This conference will now be recorded.
All the speeding to order.
I am Lady Angela Stone, I, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in this world for liberty and justice for.
Okay, under clerk, item A, going forward, regular meeting.
Make the motion.
Go for it.
All in favor?
Hi.
Item B, local law, one dash two zero two two, temporary moratorium and short-term rentals.
I'll make the motion.
Sorry.
Second.
Anybody want to have any comments after seven years of making?
What they did at the town was just to emphasize, anyone who currently has a permit, maintain a permit. Anyone who in the transition because they have went from post-compliance to this other, they then received the transferal email, those who have one, still can have one. Anyone who's not applying or who hasn't applied for them has a filing of the Secretary of State.
And we were just getting.
Partnership.
And then there is the variance, and then you can apply to the board for the variance. You have to, you have to disprove, uh, this is what I'm looking for, you have to be able to establish economic hardship.
And just as a side note, since we've made mention in the back of the moratorium, there's been 100 new applications for short-term leases. A total of 200, but some are renewed. These are 100 brand-new.
100 brand-new? Wow. So, it was like a week ago was just 100 municipal.
They, I knew that one time, I mean, I know we can't single out certain sector of things. The thing that doesn't feel right about the moratorium is if you have a commercial property and you want to have a short-term rental, I still think you should go there. It's time to discuss, so we're six months for that. But I'm gonna say in the moratorium, I.
But I, I, not to engage into the back and forth of the register, although there is that sort of the potential of language for a store or something where you can turn a building into, because then all of a sudden you would just have a mainstream of just short-term leases.
Right, the part of the, is.
And that's why, that's why, I know you don't feel that commercial sort of part of that's what we're not using, during the time of use.
Sorry.
That's all right. Any more discussion on the law itself? No reason to re-dated, so, no, I don't know, okay. All those in favor?
Hi.
Anyone vote? I take the next step, that will be to sign that off to all of you.
Yes.
Okay, moving on, I can see, have we got, we got Janet yet?
We do.
Okay. Janet, I don't see access technology, we were not able to get the change that you asked for on the contract. We do have a board that has gone bad, it would be nice to have that contract so we can move forward. Is there anything we can do tonight to pass that, or should we table it for two weeks from now?
Well, my only change was that, was that we're not like.
Right. I emailed ATI and they're gonna send a new contract. If you can just add at the office in the field today, so we didn't get a chance to send it.
I think you can, if the board wants, you can authorize the signing of this agreement as, as long as the parties are correctly identified.
Great, thank you. Everyone understand what's going on? And you remember what this is all about? Yes. Um, I can do what Janet just said, could I have a motion to accept this contract? The fact that the names will be properly installed?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Wouldn't that be interesting?
Okay, item D, electric department distribution transformers that award. Peter, you want to say anything?
Yeah, so we, Kimball budgeted a certain amount for to buy mostly pad mount transformers for stock, basically, so we'd have a transformer when one goes bad. But the costs have gotten up dramatically, about 40%, seems like, relative to what they were. And so, we're going to spend the same amount of money but buy less transformers. It's what the question.
The new normal?
New normal. And hope we get by with what we got.
But as Mindy and I were talking, if we do run short, we can swap out with Tupper or Serenac and vice versa, they might do that with us. This is where, it's the M A, M A U A.
Yeah, it was my understanding, the last time I talked to Kimball, we were gonna go aside with the pole purchase, but he was gonna get refurbs on pole mounts and not on pad mounts.
No, the pad mounts, there's less of them, and refurbs on pole mounts.
Okay.
Yes, so it was $28,000 for pole mounts, and those have the refurbs.
Okay.
Because he says they're, when one goes bad, you know it right away.
Right.
And they're easier to swap out.
But because of all the leaking issues, you had the pad mounts on the previous refurbs, we'd rather go new ones. Okay.
Exactly, because we've had a bad history of refurbished pad mounts, so he wants to buy new. He wants that.
Okay, so I have a motion to.
So.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, item E was taken from two weeks ago, the Main Street attended position, we had dropped that down from two to one, part of the reason for that is, is that our current person has agreed to put in more hours, so that will eliminate one of the positions. And can we ever decide on a, on a salary for the new?
Yes, it was gonna be the same as a labor. Yeah. And I don't have a rate. And it was part of time, yes. Be 16, 90.
Okay.
No.
Okay, any questions on that? Everyone remembers that that was part of Adrian, when the meter rates went up years ago, six? I, you remember?
More than six, I've been here five, and they went in mid-game years, I was like seven.
That's eight years, we're in favor with the partner revenues, Main Street. On Main Street partner revenue?
Yes.
Okay, but anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you very much. Item F, we have taken down to disagree, but it's the hanging of the Ukrainian flags on Main Street. All in favor?
Hi.
We received them today, I think, we didn't receive them?
No, we had the last two Wednesday. Item G, ECAC turn the flags, March 14 through 20, approval to put them up.
I'll make the motion.
What size?
ECAC.
Oh.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, anything else to come from the clerk?
Just two small reminders, I sent this notice to all of you about the NICOM annual meeting, which happens in May, so any of you who wanna go, I don't know if we want to approve tonight for anybody who wants to go from the board or managers. It is May 4th through 6th, and they'd like reservations by April 1st, so we don't need to know tonight who's going, but.
Just a pro way when one wants to go, so, you know what she's saying, right?
Yeah, I'll go.
No, no, it's, you're gonna make a motion to approve any.
Oh, I made the motion.
You're making the motion that anyone would like to go.
Anyone, anyone that likes.
I guess, um, usually just the board and the mayor, but I guess some managers might be interested. So.
Okay.
I, I think also you sometimes, depending on what the agenda is, you've approved review board, ZBA, those kinds of people, but.
I don't, for this meeting, this, this one that is in Fulton Landing, we don't usually send them down for this.
Well, I would include them in if they would like to go.
Just in case that does.
Sure.
That's what you said.
I did.
Yes, okay, all in favor?
Hi.
And one other thing, I will be sending out next month, the first meeting is our annual meeting where we reaffirm all the village board policies, so I will send those to all of you as a refresher, and you can look at them over the next month and decide if any changes need to be made.
We do reappointments that day too, right?
Yes, that's it.
What's the date on that?
I think it's. And that is it.
Okay, thank you very much. Treasure item, approval for an affidavit, it's number 14.
Who did them?
Jackie.
Thank you, Jackie. Have you done one before?
A little bit.
Thank you. Motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Anything else to come from Treasure? Anything under new business? By ones? Anything under old business?
I'm gonna bring up the election. To encourage people to come out and share their perspective. Yes, we put it up on the website, Facebook.
It's a website, Facebook page.
So they, they can go and see what the ballot actually looks like, so there's less confusion when they want.
Yes.
So they know if they're approving it or, you know. That thing's something, so it should be relatively straightforward.
That being said, we do have a workshop on that day. We could cancel it, and still have it, we'll have an opinion, I doubt there's no conflict of interest, so.
No, I'll just have to find a different room.
We have a very nice new board table upstairs that we can all sit at.
Okay, so let's, let's plan, if the guests get to the point where we really don't have anything to talk about, which.
We, we have a young woman coming from the high school to present all of them, and she will show up.
Okay, anything under old business?
Just a little update, finally heard from Trailways, and they are moving forward. They met with the property managers at Hanaford and to kind of reconfigure the drop-off and pickup, but it's very promising, it's a positive sign, so Trailways will be dropping off at Hanaford for the summer, starting in a couple of weeks.
You better Trailways, implement the old Olympia building and make that like a ticket area.
So are they still using the old military then?
They're, they, they gotta regroup, and he is coming up to kind of figure out how to regroup.
So much easier than, yeah.
They did, they did. But it's not, I'm just letting you know, it's not between us, it's just information. And the Scott Airpaps that were a bone of contention with the fire department are in, and they're being trained on them, meet at 5:30 at the firehouse, if anybody would like to see the new Scott.
Sam, there was masks, did that all work out?
It did, all worked out. It, it wasn't a tank or mask, they had to get more masks and different sized masks, so.
Yeah, the mics, they all worked out.
They're supposed to.
Very good, thank you, and thank you for Trailways, thanks for staying on top of that. Anything under old business?
I would mention that the local law that you recently passed with regard to the, or that came before you with regard to the zoning amendments, that cannot be fully implemented until the county approves it, and it has been sent to the county on behalf, by Tim, on behalf of the village and the town. Mid-afternoon, late afternoon, I sent over to Anita a seeker form, and perhaps not tonight, but because there's no urgency, because we're still waiting for the county approval, we will have to fill out and complete the short environmental assessment form with regard to those land use code amendments. And Anita will get you all a copy of it, so you can study it, and perhaps it'll be on the agenda for the next meeting.
If the town didn't pass those.
Right.
Well, that's for the county. Thank you, Janet, it's. Anything else with old business?
Not old business, but we were talking about it earlier, I'd like to thank Lauren for the articles she wrote on the elected fellow, it's a very nice article, very accurate article, and I just want to thank you, helped me out a lot. No problem.
I thank Mindy for, that's the top subject. Heard a lot.
People don't understand, nobody likes that, it's like, hard to, people don't understand what incremental power is and its role.
But it was nice that it was put out in the paper, it just helped solidify it, and it was something people could physically read if they're not on Facebook and.
It just objectively explained, and, you know, transparently communicated.
As a side note, we can expect new next month bill, the next bill that comes out, people first, to reflect a still higher cost.
I'll let you know on the 15th.
Okay.
And then I get the NIPA bill and see how much the incremental is. And if that is the case, we will push that information out well before the.
I was on.
We don't know, I, I mean, it was all based on how, how NIPA bought the power, and whether it was just cold here, or cold everywhere, and how many people were buying at the same time. Yeah, that's a huge part of it, so, we'll see, it's a possibility.
Open the question.
Yes.
Last year, the incremental sheet, this one is January.
Yeah, it was two cents last year, and it was 10 cents this January.
And your factory was all shut down in the pandemic, right? They were doing so much, supply and demand. As long as we're, we're thanking, thank you and the paper for all your fair contribution, I think you guys would agree. Don't worry about it.
Thank you.
Okay, under mayor items, I don't have, any of you got a chance to vote out in speed skating? I made it over two of the five days, was really nice, very informative. I think there was a few glitches, but being there, you couldn't see a glitch anywhere, the races all went off on time, everything went well, the technical delegates were very happy, I had a tour from Jackie upstairs of the timing. The timing is interesting, there's no more photo show, it's all done with chips on the skates. The only thing that would be old mechanical is a photo finish, in case the chips are so close that they can't tell, they did a photograph show. I also learned that the speakers, which are on every light pole, face each other, and the idea is that the sound comes, hits, and kills it, so that the, they try to keep the sound in the oval area, and the.
I have to say it, because I listened to all of it.
It's hard to hear.
Well, no, I mean, you could hear it, but it wasn't that like echoey.
Man, man.
Yeah, that echoey noise, and every afternoon after they finished, it sounded like you were at church, listening to the music. It was really nice, I mean, I got the watch on my window.
That and the, the lights that they have are theater lighting, which means that, as you can put a chip on a person, and the light will act from by radar, keep the light on.
That's cool.
Isn't it?
I remember since you got the controller.
And they condemn it now, yes?
Yes.
And which we, as Mindy pointed out, they're burning a lot less electricity now, because it's all LED, or, even the times when it was bright, it was probably still about 25% of the old.
Yeah. Way, way more efficient, they've done a really good job in efficiency.
But just to let you know that the, the test event, first of two, went very well, I did also meet the technical delegate for volleyball, bringing these people, I'll be back, as many of you know, that's in August, 24th, 27th, somewhere in there roughly. Okay, and then the other issue that I found out today, I had a meeting this morning at 11 with the World University, World Union of Olympic Cities, and it's their 20th anniversary since inception, and it has an app in May, I think it's the 25th and 27th app. I checked, asked if I had to go, and I was told we have to go.
You didn't go to the other one?
Right.
Reese? Yes. Apparently, they're going back to the birthplace of the game.
So I'm, you know, resolution.
I don't think, I don't think we do at this point by just bringing it up, so you have a chance to think about it, it's kind of off-guard, but that will be coming. Okay, nothing else under mayor items, commissioner reports? I had Sharice call, Magic released a letter today, and I asked about taking down Christmas decorations, I told her if she didn't, Connie would probably come back to the grave, so she better be going on it, so she will be taking down the Christmas decorations. And boy, it feels today.
Yes.
Okay, nothing else under commissioner reports, public comments?
I have a couple of questions, there's guys just going to see, we already brought it up, but if anyone wants to say anything about the election next week, gonna try to do a preview article ahead of time.
Boy, we hope everybody gets out and votes, it'd be nice to get a good showing and a good representation of what the village and town are going on.
That was one of the questions, in the beginning, we all felt, and I don't want to speak for the board, that it was bigger than all of us, that we should put it to the public to vote, and this is their opportunity. When, when's it start again? The, the election, what's the time?
Noon to 9:00 p.m.
Noon to 9:00 p.m.
But please make clear, this is for the village, I've already received some applications from townspeople, saying they thought it was for everyone, town will have an election later in the year for this, just village residents. I think so, I'm not sure, but I think so.
Jackie, have you communicated, and I know there was a ton of discussion about the zoning, as far as where it would be located if.
That is still in Tim Smith's, and so, that language.
Okay, so.
Is he waiting for, to see how this election happens though?
Yeah, I guess Lauren, you, the ballot.
There is some type of issue that would want to, as far as the others, to keep it more commercial.
And we will.
Yes.
Backfield. That was one, what else would you have?
Oh, with your moratorium, did you assign a start date, or is it just whenever it's filed?
Once, once it reaches Albany, it becomes.
That's, that was what, they said it started tomorrow for the town, because it was filed. They said a date for tomorrow is like, effective date, so, we're just going to.
As soon as it reaches.
It's like the end of tomorrow, theoretically, they'd have it by the end of the week.
As soon as they receive it, it becomes.
Yeah.
So just, so in the village, they, it's passed, not until, it's communicated to the Secretary of State, but it's in the state.
Anything else?
Another thing was, hasn't new police chief been hired?
Yeah, they're still waiting for civil service.
And then what was this airpack thing?
Um, the fire department needed to replace all those Scott Airpaps, they were, it was supposed to be on a location basis with replacement, but they decided to go out and make the one big purchase so that everybody had uniformity and they could share with other departments, so, that is what the Scott Airpack is for, interior firefighting.
Is that communication?
Yes, yeah, it was communication and the masks, so that you can talk to each other.
And they're, they're longer, correct?
They are longer, 30 hours versus, you know, 30 minutes versus, 45 minutes versus 30 minutes.
Which doesn't sound like a lot unless you're in fire.
All right, 15 minutes, seems like it would turn.
And I understand it's, it's harder, you got a training to make it go 30 minutes, because you start gulping air, it goes down very fast.
Yeah.
So I, I don't, last week, the town board voted on to approve our. Did I come, is that?
We're not there yet, I, I think, I can, I have for one, give a little bit more time to read what they have, maybe we can just find out a little bit about, I know that there were performance standards, let's find out about those, and then after that, I'd have to go with it.
Because I, because I voted no, because.
You voted no, or?
I voted no.
Okay.
Only, part of the reason was that the recommendations, the timeline, hadn't, wasn't really communicated to the public, as far as what are the thresholds, what are the criteria that need to be met in order for what would be a knocked-out clause, that would be magically included into, and then also, the reference, they will, you would be referenced within the contract. None of that was written or formalized, it was just promised. But it just seemed a little like the card for the horse sort of situation.
I agree with you, Jason. The clause, if you will, should be in the contract.
And with objective standards to say.
Objective standard, I, might, it should be the same group. Besides, because they are most important.
And that, that's the town's thinking as well, and I think they just, it's gotta be on paper, so. Yeah, I, I, that's the one thing, it was, in theory, it was much like OB, all agree, but in the formalization, the right, what has happened in the past, that, to me, I don't, you would review the final and make a recommendations to the board, we'll prove it, and then we have a discussion about it, to see if everything, what likes to be in it, that, I think.
I think most of those standards in that handout they gave us, it's two-sided.
You know, well, it was, first was a recommendation, but those timelines were applied to recommendation.
Maybe we can get someone first, and then on Tuesday, workshop, maybe we can make a note of that.
Also, some things like new course, possibly new course, when it's not gonna be this year, so now, we can't use that as a reason to vote. Yeah, yeah. Maybe, sort of, there's other things, something. I could put it on the email, it's just, the 2022 sort of base standards, obviously, it's easy to achieve, so that, like, it was just the process, it seemed like the card was before the horse, before it was finalized and presented to us, and I just went up the public, knowing, obviously, the community and Ironman need to work together, but the community, I think, would need to know what the expectation of Ironman is, and then, I think, Ironman, both need to, like, there's one that would like unity, but it's just a lot of, a lot of more intensity.
I think another thing that I, I think there's an ambiguity, there is, it's a possibility of a three-year contract, but that includes the one we've already approved, it's really only two-year essential, not a three.
What they want, they want.
And I think the other thing is, is that action speaks louder than words, you can say all you want, let's give them time, prove what you're doing, and I think they know that what's.
Because that's where, maybe the 2022 standards are objectives, again, are very easy to obtain.
Doesn't mean they can't see their effects.
Exactly, it would be.
It's like, as I say, the motel last year, I already noticed the difference, how many people were thanking people, and how courteous they were, and so, let's see what happens. We were, forgot what we were, your question.
Oh, that was all, yeah.
Okay, anybody that's with us, virtually? Okay.
Hello.
Debel, no.
I just wanted to see, at some point, we could discuss the possibility of revising the Mirror Lake law concerning activities on Mirror Lake, I sent a letter to Mayor Devlin concerning the speed limit, because electric boats now are becoming more and more powerful, like electric cars, so that you could, you could have more of this electric speedboat on Mirror Lake, and also, electric hydrofoil surfboards, if you've ever seen those, they are also battery-powered, but they can, they can get up to almost 25 to 40 miles an hour, they're pretty, pretty, you can get, and they're pretty powerful also, but they can also be reckless in the sense that if you, we, we don't do something to limit or ban them, they could be something that's gonna be rented on Mirror Lake with users who are not really proficient in knowing how to use one of those hydrofoils. So at some point, if we could talk about the possibility of revising the Mirror Lake law, so that looking forward, we don't come up with a knee-jerk reaction to something that might be a tragically, not a disaster, but could be something that could be a nuisance to all of us, and so, and that we have to go back and revise the law later on.
I apologize, between the motel and the test event for speech, I didn't have a chance to let the board know about that, but I think I could speak for everyone here, I'll find out, can you, on the development board, make some recommendations on what you think we should do, because obviously, you know much more about it than we do, it would be a big help, would you?
If you, if you would, maybe at a work session, I can come in and talk to you about it, I could show you what they are, and we can, I could show you some of the things we came up with, they were actually, there were hydrofoil surfboards on Lake Placid last year, although I didn't see them, there were some members of the Watershed Association that did see them and did have a lot of concern about how fast they go, and how they can be actually dangerous in the hands of the wrong people, so it's something that, in a smaller lake, where we want to limit motorboats and make, keep it more of a recreational lake with paddleboards and kayaks and canoes, et cetera, that it would be something that would be worth it to look at and possibly ban, and I think that we could do it at a work session, or I could come in at the next meeting and we can talk about it then.
I think the workshop would be perfect, which will be the 15th. I think the workshop would be perfect, which will be the fifteenth, you can vote while you're here.
We'll all too.
Mindy, I'm sure she can set that up for you. And I thank you for keeping us proactive instead of.
You have a new responsibility.
They are electric though, right?
Law, other than snowmobile, snowmobile law, regulating Mirror Lake.
It would be similar to, it would be revising the snowmobile, basically, which also covers personal watercraft, you know, jet skis.
That's banned those, maybe it has a law in the books that we can emulate.
You could ban all motorized vehicles on Mirror Lake, you do not have to allow electric vehicles at all.
And we're just gonna be granted the exception of, like, northwater.
Well, but you do have some people that are out and tall, you know, in a little electric mode.
I never, I never thought.
I think it's allowed to do that.
So, so Janet, the only law we have is the snowmobile law, isn't that true on Mirror Lake?
No, we have, I would have to look to see if the snowmobile law encompasses the use of electric motors. Of course, we have the local law that bans bubblers on Mirror Lake, and we definitely have a local law that bans all motorized watercraft, with the exception of electric motors, and I can't tell you off the top of my head whether that's in the same local law that addresses wintertime use or not.
I'd kill myself on one.
That makes, that makes sense to get ahead of the sort of trends.
Wow.
Yeah.
Well, they look cool.
Thank you, Bill.
I'd kill myself on that.
Laura, if I could put you on the spot, I don't think I've had a, you're the new review board person?
Are you talking to me?
Yes, you're our new, listen, I don't think I've mentioned, I recognized your name from our appointment. Would you like us to introduce ourselves, at some point, when we can all meet in person again, we can do it officially?
I'll come again, I'll come again in person and meet you. I'm just a local resident, and just, I'm on the review board, but I'm just relatively new here and trying to get up to speed on what's what, and I think you're all doing a great job.
She's attending, attending both village and town, I think she's outranked me in the number of meetings attended.
We appreciate that, your dedication.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay, then with nothing more to come before the board tonight, as we're adjourned. All in favor? Get rid of their time.